Yeah, I'll be in agenda review, that's a whole step.
All right.
Yeah, we're all fine.
Everybody get, agenda redoing it, executive committee, okay?
Okay, this is where you want to. Oh, we were all there.
Okay. This is the executive committee meeting at five thirty. We've called to order and you passed out the information.
Well, now I got the rest of the information that came down yesterday.
It's Matt.
This is where you want to amend the agenda, incorporate.
All right. Okay, but I have some additional information from the law director, am I correct?
No, this isn't, this was hand delivered to county office.
Oh.
By messenger. This was brought to me, to the clerk of counsel from Squire Patton Boggs. A writ of mandamus was filed on behalf of Michael Smedley.
Yeah, that's.
And Madam Clerk, may I do a little bit?
No, they're not. Do you trust me?
Make a motion?
Madam Clerk, I'd like to make a motion to accept the documentation that was presented to you from Squire Patton and Boggs.
Beat that law firm.
Do I have a second motion?
A second motion.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis? Counselor Thomas?
Yes.
I also have, was hand delivered to the prosecutor's office yesterday. It was accepted by assistant prosecutor downtown pertaining to ordinance forty-four fifteen, criminal investigation of petitions. And it was accepted. As such, on behalf of East Cleveland City Council.
So is this going into the record?
Correct.
Read it to the record, you don't need a month after that.
It says, Dear Mr. Mendez, on behalf of the council, I request you to an immediate formal investigation. The East Cleveland petitions for annexation is submitted to the council office on July twenty, two thousand fifteen, and so ordered by ordinance forty-four fifteen as by council and office eighteen, two thousand fifteen. I request that special assistant prosecutor be appointed to oversee a complete and thorough investigation of this case. I, on behalf of council, also demand that any and all violations of law be prosecuted to the fullest extent as allowed by law. Any documents related to this investigation can be secured from East Cleveland Clerk of Council and/or the petition for annexation committee, including but not limited to the original petitions, which are in custody of the East Cleveland Clerk of Council. Any and all correspondence is to be sent to the Clerk of Council for dissemination to all council members. I look forward to your immediate response and I am available to discuss any further clarifications that may be warranted in this matter. Respectfully, Barbara J. Thomas, Council President.
Okay. So now we have two sets of documents that, one is the, what was hand delivered to the prosecutor, mentioning the fact that we are challenging the, not the signatures, but the circulating of the petition. And it's getting the irregularities that has taken place. And moving to have prosecutor oversee and give us an investigation and see what he comes up with. Moving along. Anybody who didn't have enough time to deal with making more copies. But any event that some of our residents want to see the documentation, you may come in tomorrow and ask for a copy. Am I correct? And the deputy, is she in tomorrow? Deputy clerk?
Yeah.
I think it will be Monday because the deputy clerk wants the papers off. Okay?
Point order, Madam President, the first document, is that stated for the record what the document is?
The red managing?
Yes, did you state that?
Yes.
From whom?
Okay, this was.
I have to read it again so that everybody can understand, I don't know. Slowly.
By messenger to me from Squire's Patton Boggs regarding the state, Michael Smedley versus East Cleveland City Council. It's in Quahog County, comma, case court, case number eight-five-zero-two-three-six. Judge Michael J. Russo says, Dear Clerk of Council, enclosed, please find a courtesy copy of complaint and mandamus filed yesterday against East Cleveland City Council and its members. We request that you provide a copy to city council and each of its members. We'd be happy to discuss this matter with council and/or its attorneys. Sincerely, Squire Patton Boggs, Stephen A.
I just want to ask a question, so then you want to get to the law director. If Michael Smedley is the chief of staff, and he's on the petitions that were circulated. And now we're doing a writ of mandamus with his name, is that a conflict? He's an employee of the city, his name is on the petitions, and now you're doing a writ of mandamus?
Well, I understand that he's also a resident, so I don't think he compromises his rights as a resident. As a resident, because of this.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Yeah, I have a question. What time was this paper received?
This was received in the office, I got back to the office at work.
Now, President, I have serious concerns when you have the lawsuit that's pending and my name is attached to it. And I'll find out until almost six o'clock the following day. This should be a phone call or a follow-up immediately to all of us, because all of us are on this line.
All right. I'm sorry, I said. This was taken upstairs yesterday, you gave it to Willa Hammond, asked council for.
Well, that, that's, that's, that's not relative to what I'm saying, I'm saying, I need to be informed, my name is on it.
You're gonna get a copy of it.
Just at four o'clock, I should have known by yesterday about five o'clock.
He's gonna get a copy of it, his home address is on there. They're serving him, he's gonna be served too.
I got it. I just want to bring it up, I'm baffled by that.
May I ask one more question?
I, I just want to say that this stuff is getting legally, it's becoming legal, technical, legally, technical. And we're gonna probably need an attorney. So I see they got Fred Nance down here, so Squire, used to be Squire Sanders and Dempsey, but it's now Squire's, uh, twice.
That's what.
Squire's Patton and Boggs. So maybe when we get into our discussion, we need to consider some legal, our own legal, you know, and I, and if.
Well, that will be a discussion into.
Okay.
Okay. Is he ready for it? Okay, so, um, now where are we? Tell me how long.
You're in discussion.
Uh, did we vote on the amendment? We voted on the amendment?
Yeah, we voted to put, for the record, the Squire Patton and Boggs. And what they hand delivered was, a crook delivered down to county prosecutor's office for matter record.
Okay, um, the next, um, agenda, only agenda is to draft a list to appoint, um, three commissioners in my.
Before we move on, Madam President, can we go back to the hand-delivered document to typically the prosecutor? Do we have, do we know any timeframe for someone to get back to us in regards to this?
This question, is there a timeframe for the document that was given to county prosecutor yesterday?
No.
There's a draft, so it's that we can come to later, I guess. So even in regards to what we for, uh, no, what we passed, challenging that one, what's the timeframe for anyone getting back to us with no other than documents, the documents, do we know?
The, um. The information that I'm getting is that he will get back, uh, he was supposed to get, they were supposed to get back to the clerk between today and tomorrow and my correct? So if Madam Clerk, I sent her down there with the, uh, hand, so the hand delivered the information. And she met with the investigator, am I correct about this? Would you tell my, uh, the, my colleagues what took place and where they were going, when they were going to get back between today and tomorrow, that's the information that we have?
Speak up, Ruby, good evening.
I had to meet with the broad unit for over two hours. I'm waiting for them to sign, they're waiting for a judge to sign up for the grand jury. All papers that are in my possession now are, I'm steward of them, nobody's allowed to touch them. As soon as they give me the subpoena, they are to, everything is to go downtown.
So may I include, include me with this project?
I've got their cards in my office room.
We, we will discuss that in its totality, um, when we get together, yeah, when we all discuss this.
And then as soon as I got back to the office and I received this Squire Patton Boggs, this went right upstairs to our legal counsel.
Which is the first line, um.
Yes. Right upstairs to Ms. Hammond.
Yeah, is that correct, Miss, correct, Hammond?
Yes.
Is it's not supposed to go to you at this point?
I, um.
As the law director.
I retrieved it and then I, when I looked it over and I reviewed my particular circumstances as well as professional responsibility of lawyers and I took it back down, indicated that I felt I was conflicted and that outside, I would recommend outside counsel to the, to be funded, to the finance department.
And that was the information that was given to the clerk and she brought that back to us?
Yes, I gave it back to her, I spoke with Mr. Johnson today. And indicated I can turn to protect myself, that I thought that you guys should get outside counsel and it should be funded.
Okay, we are, I'm in the process of going downtown tomorrow and talking to Buckley and King. And he has said that I should come down and discuss it with him. And the information that we have would, I would go with Tracy, who gathered all this information and show what we have. And there is a, are, inverted in our agreement with King and Buckley, that if necessary, they would take on a additional, um, case for a fee. So, and you've talked to Mr. Johnson, and these are all the things that have taken place within yesterday and today. So this comes up here so that we can deal, deal with it now.
I shared with Mrs. Ujija and Counselor Martin was in the room.
Okay, so this was at what time, about five o'clock?
Yeah, yeah.
Five o'clock, okay. So, um, yes, Mr. King.
I would like to caution council, as a whole, I understand the need for legal representation. The city does not have money, we personally don't have money.
Can you hear me?
I would like to caution council in regards to racking up legal fees. The city does not have money. We individually don't have money. Right? So I, I would like to caution us as a whole, chasing this thing legal. And I would like to, I would like to feedback on what Councilman Weaver said, Tracy. We should have called, just whoever, whoever signed for this, did they just put it on the desk? Whoever signed for it, should have called.
And what would you have done?
I would have asked for a copy, so I know what it says. I came here today and I'm, and I'm handed a document saying basically, no, I gotta go to court.
Okay. No, you, you've got a document that's saying that you are in being sued. But your law director, who is the city's lawyer, had to, it had to go through the proper channel first, and that's where it went. I would not just hand something over to a client without that client's lawyer knowing what is going down. And the law director now is saying she had to look at it and see where she was, because the other day, with all due respect to the law director, she's our lawyer.
With all, with all, with all due respect.
What I'm saying is that, wait a minute, I'm complicated. What I'm saying is for her to look and give us what she interpreted to be as a part of her job and of her being the mayor's employee, supposed to be our employee.
City, city.
Supposed to be the city.
No, I'm saying.
Well, first of, first of all, let me get through with what my law director said. And the law director said there might be a problem because she is an employee and that's her boss. And then my, am I not correct, Madam?
Yes, what happened was, within fifteen minutes, I brought that, I think I got about four-thirty, within fifteen minutes, I brought it back down to council house.
This document?
Yes, I brought, I took it back down because I didn't want to compromise either myself or council. So I said, I think I'm conflicted and I think Counselor Martin was in the room. And I was speaking to the clerk of council and I said, I don't think we could do it to me or to you guys, to me, to the, uh, the lawyer.
So you got this yesterday?
He was in the room. We had just happened to be.
With all due respect, I can't read, I can't read, I would just like to talk to you yesterday. I walk in here and now I can't really read this in front of you, but I can read and understand.
Well, you got a copy, you can read it.
Now, now we're discussing.
I immediately put it back.
I just, I just wanted to make, make.
I immediately gave it back to council.
Then pick back. I want to ask a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Briefly, when we discussed it briefly and I had read the document, we did discuss relations to what Brandon King talked about, legal fees for the council, and that you would address Jack Johnson about, what did he have to say about? Because we're probably gonna have to get an attorney.
Well, he's going, I gave it to him, I gave it to him. And I'm sure he's going to, his plans ought to put it before the fiscal supervisors. And perhaps he may have the case, I guess, to agree police officers might have to be laid off, but, um, you know, this is very important to the decision.
Well, I, I hope that's not the case, but we have the power to juggle the budgets, yeah, whether we want to juggle it. And we shouldn't have to allow taking, getting rid of the two companies. And, and I know, and I defer this to you, Council President, I know we got some money in our budget. But we can juggle budgets since that's where our power is, to cover some of our legal fees, without getting rid of any police officers, that's how I see it.
Well, first of all, um, it is the first line of defense. The first line of defense is when you go through any, um, um, I was going to say, any suit, anything that's legal, and you have a lawyer, the lawyer is supposed to give us direction in which to go. And our law department and our law director is saying that she's, her license might be compromised in all of this.
She's the law director for the city. She's the law director for the city.
Mr. O'Me, please.
We've gone through this before.
Please. Mr. O'Me. And what I'm saying to this council, there is a direction in which the law director is supposed to direct us in. Not back off and say, I'm, uh, been conflicted. So therefore, she has to deal with what's going to happen and make sure that we are covered. I cannot sit up here and say to you or the rest of the council that this should have been put to him, 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 him. It should have went directly to the law director, so the law director could decipher and get. I'm, I'm still, I'm not, I'm not debating what you're saying, um, Mr. Vice President. What I am saying, if I've got a lawyer that takes care of me, then my lawyer gonna be the first one to look at that document that you're suing me. Oh my God, Mr. Lawyer, take a look at this.
It's been twenty-six hours. I beg, I beg differ with you. I know she's the law director, but her name is not on the lawsuit minds, he is.
My name's your lawyer. Who's your lawyer?
When you go, I, I don't know, this is about the conversation yesterday you had with the law director.
I didn't have any conversation. And I told the, the conversation that was here, that was supposed to come here.
Seven at all, she is your law director, she is your lawyer that will represent you. Anything that come up this, this council or this city, she is the person that represents you.
He's in the mean.
Not supposed to, that's her job.
When I, when I went down there, um, Counselor Martin was reading the lawsuit, so he knew, uh, you know, that's what I said, that I was, you know, all of the, the.
Being smart ass doesn't mean anything. We didn't take care of.
Harvey, we're not here to argue in this.
This house is divided, and the house is not gonna stay in when it's divided.
It's not divided.
This is ridiculous.
He's, oh, he haven't recognized him.
It's not divided. I'm, I'm addressing the law director and the law director is addressing us as a whole. What is the law director's, uh, direction for this body? If she says, I can't represent you.
She's not.
Then, then that's something that we'll have to take up elsewhere.
I have no problem with that. Council President, if you would be as kind as to ask the law director for something in writing, as if she cannot represent us, conflicted with whatever, let's, let's have that in writing. And then, also, I want to go back, and please, it's been twenty-six hours. You called me yesterday and said something about that.
I didn't, I, I couldn't have called you.
You had, you got it?
No, I don't, I didn't have it.
Whoever received that in the office could have called.
It goes to the law director.
As we go forward, I would appreciate.
It goes to the law. First of all, I am, so wait a minute, first of all, I do not get anything oral. I do not proceed with anything oral. Everything that I do is documented, eyes dotted and t's crossed. I am not going to listen to anything that's oral. The law director has to say to us in writing what is going on. Then we could take it elsewhere. If she's not gonna re, represent us, then we gotta rock.
But, I, what I don't understand, Council President, is you waiting on her to say whether we should see a copy of it or not?
No, I wasn't waiting on her to see the copy, and that's the first place it's supposed to go.
But the problem I have is.
So decipher what's going on.
It's been twenty-four hours, we didn't know nothing about it.
And I, we didn't know nothing about the suit. Uh, Mr., I, no, I didn't.
Then that's a problem, isn't it?
Yes, it is, if somebody, anybody can sue anybody. Anybody can sue anybody.
So you found out about it today?
No, I found out about it last night.
So, I just got it all last night?
On the way, well, on the way home. Because I was calling to ask something else. And I didn't know Mr. O, Mr. Counsel Martin.
I sure wasn't gonna call him, I sure, I sure wasn't gonna call him, you know, and I'll say this, and I'll say this to your face, I'm surprised you didn't know about it, and I'm surprised you didn't get a call from Gary Norton, because you up there all the time.
Because somebody in the council gotta go.
I'm surprised you didn't get a call from Gary Norton, you up there all the time, all right?
That's, that's a lot. Okay, so we got the, we got the document, uh, Mr.
Okay, all right, all right.
We got, we got the documents, she got the documents. Let's all read the document and get advice from the law director.
Fourteen years, she haven't got nothing done.
Okay, now, you know, this is not from good.
I apologize, I apologize, there's, there's something coming with me, and I apologize.
I think that, you know, the appropriate thing with any lawsuit, I think is to go into, when you do want to do, consider going to executive session.
That's true.
It's perfectly appropriate for you guys to be in executive session.
To go over this, that's what my intent was.
We got to executive session, and we're told we can do it today.
Who says that?
You can go executive session.
We can go downtown session.
Yes, okay.
So we can't do it right now?
Well.
No, no.
No, this is just.
When you're talking about the details of the lawsuit. But that's the fact of the lawsuit, so you don't think when it arrives and, uh, you know, the fact that you're being sued, you certainly can't communicate that to the public, that's on the record, I mean.
Media, it's gonna be there.
Yeah, it's a fact. But how your strategy, your legal strategy.
It's going to be.
Yeah, how you are going to attack or not attack or deal with the lawsuit, that's an executive session matter.
Okay, so.
So, so what are we gonna do now?
What do you mean, what are we gonna do?
Are we gonna go with this agenda, or, because we're just saying the same thing, are we gonna go forward with this agenda? Or are we gonna go do an executive session in the next couple of days, or what are we gonna do?
We're going to do this agenda as, as, as right now, and get it together. And I would suggest that the law, the, um, our lawyer department get terms to self-together to tell us what, in detail, what is going to take place. You haven't discussed this one, you brought it back down.
You know, Madam Chairman, I need to say this, uh, one of the issues that we've been faced with for years, more than fourteen years, Mr. Weaver, is our law department not really representing the entire city. Nailing toward the administrative branch, through the fact that administrative branch, the CEO has the power to fire, because they serve at will. The law director's responsibility is to represent the council and the administration, the entire city.
And the court.
Okay, and a court. Now, that's in the chart, okay? Now, uh, these are some mechanics that have to be worked out, and in terms of us being broke? We're not broke. There's money that we can manipulate or change, we have the power to do that, Ms. Hammond, to get the legal fees we need. Okay, all right, well, uh, okay, so that needs to be, that needs to be stated. Okay, all right, well, uh, okay. So that needs to be, that needs to be stated. Uh, the, uh...
I think she did say that. She said she talked to them.
This here, uh, I got the thing, you know, I happen to come in the office and I usually don't come in in the evening and I came in in the afternoon and she came in and I got a chance to look at the document, okay? And it's basically, the essence of it is, is that they, they're saying that we're holding up the annexation process. That's, yeah, that's what, that's basically what it's saying. And it's a whole lot of pieces in this whole thing. Well, okay, it's a whole lot...
I forgot to tell my husband where I, I gotta call him because he's waiting that night. I'll be right back.
To make the long story, that's what it's saying. And that's, and that's an opinion. Lawyers give you opinions. Now, we have a right to counter that, okay? And Robert said something that we've said consistently since these petitions were turned in. We're not questioning the signatures. We're questioning the discrepancies on, uh, the circulators. We're questioning discrepancies on, uh, a number of things. They, on the back, it's a whole lot of things that is wrong with the petitions. Okay, that's what we're questioning. We're, we're not questioning the designers, okay? That's why we, we went to the prosecutor to have a take a look at it. And we think there's something there. Now, I got a lot of common sense. College, but my grandmother taught me a lot, taught me a lot of common sense. And when you look at these petitions, they're fraudulent. They're doctored up. There's no doubt about it. Okay, and we'll see what, what the prosecutor has to say. Okay, and, and this is my opinion. In the whole process, it's gonna, everything's gonna come to a halt. Because they got to see if these things were genuine or not. And if they left language out, they put a tax to it, the whole, this is the worst thing I've ever seen since I've been in politics. And that's my opinion, okay? Thank you.
Uh, Mr., uh, thank you. Well, one thing that I really wanna say, now is not the time for us to be going back and going to each other. Now is the time for us to look at the document and tear it apart and see where the law director is going to deal with what she's... We've got to have that. You got that. The first thing that a law, the, the court asks you is what did the law director say? That's the first thing they say. And then they always send you right back to your law director. But if I got, if I got documentation in writing that says I am in jeopardy for my position as a, as a professional or whatever, then we can go and she'd advise us where we should go. And that's what she was doing at that particular time.
At four thirty yesterday, I came, her way and said, and this morning I met with Jack and said that, uh, funds should be requested for, through our representation because I, I felt conflicted. It wasn't fair. It's not fair. It's not fair. I don't think we... And I'm just in trouble all of a sudden. You might have to write me a note.
Well, I'm, I'm not saying that. I, I am the, am the president. I was not addressed by the law director. I was not, okay? Uh, and these closet vetoes and all things coming through the mail, uh, through the emails, I never got any of that. So the president didn't get that. It was dropped down to the office. And the, on the way home, I was calling the clerk to ask her something else. And she said, by the way, I received X documentation from, uh, the law director. Okay, at six or seven, seven o'clock at night, I'm not gonna call nobody and say, well, this is what is going on. I, uh, I'll wait until the next day because you ain't sued, you ain't being sued right now. We're not in court and the law director is, uh, going, is dealing with it now and I knew he was gonna be here. So if you wanna know what was going on, you know, I guess, uh, Mr., uh, Martin just happened to be there and you, you're in the office playing bet.
Uh, uh, every day, I come out to bed.
Okay, so yesterday he wasn't there. So, I mean, but it should not be one getting information, the other one getting information. Everybody should get the same information at the same time and we go over and see which, in which direction we're going to go. And that is to be made a decision by the entire council here. Yes, Mr.?
Before we move on, I mean, two points. One, we talked about this.
Can't hear you.
They can't hear you, Mr. King. We talked about this as length, as a body. Communication, 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 right? Between us, our clerk, deputy clerk, we have to keep the lines of communication open and we have to communicate.
That's true.
Second thing is you're going to Buckley King tomorrow to meet with him.
I just got that, that notice today. And I was gonna tell you today because, uh, when she made the, the suggestion, then we looked at the, um, papers that we signed with Buckley and King. And in one portion of it, it said he will do, they will do, uh, representing us in other, um, segments. So I was asking, what can we do about this? Just even, she was recommending an outside lawyer and we already have one, but I wanted to talk to him and then come back and talk to my counsel. And see exactly, I don't, I don't like, um, cherry picking what I talked to you about. I tell you everything. Sometimes I call you and you be out and I'm trying to get Martin and I definitely tried to get my vice president, but now he's answering my, uh, law department.